We have NAC architects with us here. They have been compiling a facilities needs assessment for us to try and figure out what are the most urgent of our needs. The last time they were here with us, maybe three months ago, we went through a very in-depth analysis and walked Monrovia High School to try and get a sense of where things were. And from that, we requested another assessment that identified kind of some priority areas. The not everything that's possible that might be touched by DSA should we change it, but the, you know, what is urgent, what will, you know, what has a lifespan that will fail at some point. And to provide us with a kind of a more focused targeted approach. And so I think I can just turn it over to Michael.
Sure.
Right?
Okay.
All right.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So let's see, I mean, just, if you all see the screeners, it's all behind many of you. Well, you're following on the paper. So the PowerPoint just has, so first, some of the history, how we got where we are and who was, who was part of this. And I'll skip through because you've seen much of that before. There is a broad report, as the superintendent mentioned. So what I want to get to is quickly the new information. And as was just mentioned, what we did was we went through the entire, the entire document that we had prepared. We went through all the information we had gathered. And I think in our discussion while at Monrovia High School, we had a lot of discussion about how sometimes seemingly minor work scope can trigger a whole slew of other things that DSA will look at. And so what we wanted to do was look at, one, things that don't have that kind of snowball effect. We wanted to look at things that presented real problems to the district in terms of failing or kind of on the verge of failing systems or structures that needed to really be dealt with. And things that the district could, could implement with their own forces. So in doing that, we assembled, I guess, a kind of subset of work that was skimmed from previous investigations we'd done. And we put new cost estimates to that work. So as, as was mentioned, we looked at this as new priorities. And so we defined four levels of priorities. And this was before we, before we started actually relooking at things. We said, a first priority is anything that would present a life safety concern. And I will be happy to tell you, we did find nothing that qualifies in that category one. So a priority two were things, systems that are failing or have failed. So things like a roof that might be leaking currently, air conditioning systems that are not working. And that really prevents you from using facilities or puts facilities that you currently have in the risk of deteriorating in a more rapid fashion. So things that really need to get dealt with, otherwise you have perhaps greater concerns in the future. Three were systems that may fail in the foreseeable future. And this really fell into the category of roofing or HVAC. So for example, we look at HVAC systems typically having a lifespan of 20 years. Much of your HVAC work was done around 2000 or the early 2000s. So we do have HVAC systems that are approaching the end of life. They are working right now, but if we look around the district, we say, you know, these are things that we should be looking at and be, you know, if you're looking at budgeting over the next several years, thinking about how to deal with some of that. And then category or priority four, maintenance recommended focusing on issues that can be addressed without expanding scope, the kind of non-DSA scope.
Can you expand DSA?
Sure. Yes, so DSA is the Division of State Architect. And whenever we go to the Division of the State Architect with plans, so as an architect, sometimes the school district will say, we want to replace a ceiling. And when we replace a ceiling, we touched the fire alarm. And they'll say, well, no, don't put the fire alarm back the way it was. Code has, code has changed. Please update the fire alarm. And so going to DSA can have a, what I call a snowball effect where once you have to touch these other things, they ask you to do other scopes of work. And really, for the Division of the State Architect, DSA, when you come in with a set of plans, that is their only chance to get, their only chance to have you update your facilities. Because codes change roughly every three years. And for example, if you have not updated a facility, sent plans into DSA in say 20 years, you may have six code cycles that have changed. None of those code issues typically that we've seen, that we're seeing around the district or other districts are presenting life safety concerns. So you have existing, and every school district has, existing non-conforming conditions. So for example, a fire alarm, current fire alarm code says that we have to have voice evacuation. It puts out an audible voice message, but they're not going to make you go around the district tomorrow and change those out. But when you go back in with a set of plans, they will. So when, when we're looking for scopes of work that don't go to DSA, we're looking for those things that don't have the potential for that kind of snowball effect. Not to say that the next time you go in for a modernization project at a building, you won't have to deal with those things. And those are in the report, but in terms of priority items that if we're looking in the, the near future, things that you can do to kind of stretch available funding, those are the ones we wanted to highlight. Now, I will say that priority four, anything that had to do with a portable building, we only put in priority four. So the, the thinking here is that portable buildings, it's questionable whether or not they are worth the investment of new roofing. They are, in many cases, the portable buildings are not long-term structures. They were not intended to be long-term structures. You have some of those that are, you know, of an age that says that they are not in great shape. So we did not want to put portables at a priority that would say, spend your resources on those ahead of permanent buildings. So our recommendation was to invest in the permanent structures ahead of those. Now, you may, in the course of going through this, say that, you know, kids are in a portable building. We have to deal with that. The roof is leaking. We can't have kids in that, in that building. You may choose to adjust that, but for the purposes of, of what we did, we put portables as a lower priority. Okay.
And along that line, I assume there's still no permanent buildings that you found you would say not worth investing very much money in this building?
No, we did not, we did not find that. I think in terms of...
Particularly the MOT building.
Well, okay, so that's... You know...
Write again, President, a good one.
Well, if, if we look at full modernization, you know, what it, what it would take to modernize some current buildings, you may remember that some of the costs are significant. And new construction right now, I'd say average across Southern California is five to $550 a square foot for, for school buildings. That's what we're, we're seeing. The level of code and seismic work, you know, it's significant. So when you have a choice to spend $350 a square foot in modernization, you are really right at what we consider a tipping point for whether it makes sense to invest in those buildings. You know, we often say six, 50 to 60 percent, when you have crossed 50 to 60 percent of replacement value, you are, it's, it's a decision point. So I would say that, you know, sometimes you may have cases where if you were to do full modernization, you may want to dig deeper into that question. So any questions about how we've structured this? Because now I think we're ready to go through some of the sites. So Brad Oaks is one of the site, is the first site we'll look at. And again, in terms, and it might be easier to look on your paper if, if you can't read it on the screen. But there were no priority one items. Priority two, again, those systems that have failed, is the roof on building C. So, and, and I don't know, do, do you want to go site by site or would it be better to kind of give a summary and kind of overview?
I don't think in 40 minutes, I'm going to be able to go site by site.
Okay. So...
If you can hit the highlights, it's time for me if anybody has any other questions.
Yeah. So, so let me then give the, a broad overview. We do have cases of priority two items at many schools and much of it is roofing. And in the, in the large report, there is a summary of just roofing. But if you were to isolate just roofing and think about doing a series of roofing projects, there are some that have failed. That they are actively leaking, delaminating, and in condition that should get some attention in the relative near future. There are probably ways that you could get through another season through patching or some other kinds of, you know, temporary fixes. But there, we're going to find in priority two, roofing systems have failed.
Is it safe to say the roofs in, in priority two are to the point if we don't do roof replacement within the next three or four years, we're going to start seeing other damage come about because of...
Yes. 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 Once, once, anything that we listed as priority two is currently producing leaks or intrusion of water into the structure, and that is the quickest way to deteriorate buildings.
So just as a point of clarification, does that mean we must replace in the next three or four years or repair in the next three or four years?
It, it could be either. There are, and, and that really is going to depend on the level of investment and the lifespan that you wish to have after the work. So for example, the roofs that, that have currently failed, you can patch and get through another season, but the roof is still old and the parts that you don't patch will...
At some point.
Yeah, so...
Fifty carat is a little excessive on those parts.
When you say the roof is leaking...
Yes.
We're not talking necessarily, someone's already putting the bucket and you're not seeing leaks. It's, it could be internal within the structure and the walls and the ceiling.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Okay. I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah, so... Right. So the, when the roofs were inspected, they inspected from the top as well as from within. And there were visible spots where the roof was cracking or delaminating, separating from flashings, you know, things that help keep the water out. So when we find that, that's, that's what's being noted. And the, the likelihood that water is intruding into the surface, into the structure, whether we can visibly, whether a teacher has made a call to Fernando or not.
Right, I wanted, I wanted to defend, make that clear.
Yeah.
That someone could be in a classroom or in one of these buildings and not, you know, look around, not note that there's a leak, that there's a real issue, but internally there could be a significant issue.
Exactly.
So on, I'm going to skip to the back.
Yeah.
Which is looking at the costs.
Sure.
So priority two are moving expenses.
Yes. Yep.
Priority two expenses. Well, I want to make sure, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Keep, keep going, keep going.
We go to the next last page.
So after...
After funding opportunities?
After everything. This is right priority. If I'm reading this correctly, the total need for priority two items is $4,269. Which, which says to me that over the next five years at least, we need to find somewhere close to that amount.
Six million or... Okay. And once again, Tommy, how much money do we, are we looking at utilizing? What are, are we listing repair, for maintenance funds?
Definitely less than 4.2 million dollars.
Which is a box and a lake.
David, do you have any idea?
Right, I mean, just taking a step backwards, the entire purpose of this, I shouldn't say the entire purpose, but the main purpose was we have X amount of dollars and we're trying to figure out how to utilize those dollars.
Yeah.
So we all knew that there was going to be more identified issues than funds, but I think it's important to start back to the beginning to say, this is how much we had. Because I think that that is going to help determine the course of action for where we're going to go. So, right? So, so for example, if we're significantly below priority two levels, I'm not sure talking about priority four at this point has any value. But always good for us to have for future decisions, whether we're going to do bonds or what have you. But for now, I mean, start with the worst thing.
Yeah.
Go from there is my thinking, right? So, so on the...
Well, you can't just ignore priority three items.
I, I understand, but let's, I want to be able to put things into context. So we don't spin out of control. So when we're looking at expenses or when you identify a cost, are these costs the minimum cost that you've identified to rectify the problem? Meaning, you can always say, put a new roof on.
Right.
Right? But that's not always the most cost effective way. Like you said, there's always a tipping point.
Right.
So, so when you put your numbers down, are you using your best judgment as to which way things are tipping and that's the number you're putting down? Or are you using a flat or going to replace whatever is broken if it's within five years or whatever?
Yeah, so for roofing, they are replacement costs for, so doing new roof on a structure where the, where the age of the roof has produced failures. And the likelihood is that patching is not a long-term great investment. It's not to say that if you choose to get through three more seasons through patching, that's not an option. But our, our numbers are based on...
Replacement.
Replacement. The roof is of an age that it should be replaced and that's what the experts are...
So I understand where it says priority, repair or replace the roof.
Yeah.
This is not repair. This, the word repair should be replace.
The cost is based on, on replacement.
Okay.
The, it, our recommendation is to you is that to avoid further damage, something should be prioritized. But the cost is based on replace.
You have to spend some money repairing now, but sometime in the next five years you need to replace.
I'm going to note there's any relationship between, because under priority three, you have the roof and the HVAC, and the HVAC is on the roof. I'm wondering if there is any structural damage, failure of the roof because of the HVAC.
No. We did not find any structural failures that, that, that would have fallen into a life safety concern.
Well, but a, a, a failure, so you're, you're recommending a replacement or a repair of it. So is the need to replace or repair any of these because of the HVAC system?
No.
Because like I'm looking at Brad Oaks on the first page and it says, repair, replace, replace or repair the roof, building's A, and then replace the HVAC system for building A.
Yeah, the, the way buildings are constructed, the HVAC systems are typically on a curb. So they're actually raised a bit off the roof. And so it makes them related, but not necessarily tied, tied together.
Do we have any more Prop 39 money?
No, we're going to spend all the Prop 39 money for the HVAC and in addition, we probably will use our own money. So Brian, I have the information and we're probably around $4 million. All the money, different maintenance and the, the capital outlay and the... Yeah.
Is that $4 million this year money or is that the next three years?
On, by, we project by end of next year, the, all the facility money, including maintenance, development fee and the, the pass-through, redevelopment agency, all the pie money together around $4 million.
Wish you didn't cover that redevelopment soon.
Yeah, that's true thing. We are thinking about once we have enrollment on August 14th, we have enrollment, then we will identify which school has increased enrollment. Then we will definitely study project for that schools because that, that is our opportunity to spend that part of money. Yeah.
So we have about four million dollars I mean, for maintenance. Okay.
Well, the minimum.
Yeah.
A four point two million dollar bill.
But you can't...
In government work, that's not bad.
I mean, we can't obligate the whole four million dollars to the roofs that are in priority two. Because some of the roofs in priority three are gonna fail before the inspector thought they did. And some of the HVACs are gonna go out.
Oh, I'm, I'm...
You're gonna have to maintain all of that stuff that breaks down.
This is what you get paid to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so true.
It may be skipping ahead, but on Canyon Oaks High School,
Yeah.
you have one priority two item and the estimated cost is much higher than other school sites that have priority, one priority two item.
Right.
Is it because it's a larger building?
It's a large roof.
Okay, it's a very, so that whole area has to replace as opposed to maybe a section under buildings?
No, it, it's just, it's a bigger building compared to other buildings.
It was just significantly higher amount, okay, thank you. Did you see Canyon Oaks or Canyon earlier? Canyon Oaks Mountain High School. We own that, right? Does that change anything?
No, we don't have...
Does it allow us to get a different type of...
But I do, I wonder if adult debt is part of that and, I think, not that we have a whole lot of adult debt funds, but...
Yeah, we, we pretty much sweep that account.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah. You know, Connie, I do have a question about that, you know, because those buildings are still uncovered, right? They're still making payments.
Yeah, COP, that's correct.
Do we have any, uh, conditions? On our, on our, for lack of a better term, the bonds, on the minimum maintenance required?
So, if I understand your question, you mean that bond versus COP?
No.
No, all of them, anything that has a debt.
Uh-huh.
Any building that has a debt on it.
Uh-huh.
Do any of those terms have maintenance clauses in them?
I'm not aware of right now, but I can double check, yeah.
How many buildings do we have a debt on?
Just only that building, yeah.
Because we have a bond, we're not paid off yet.
But we have a loan.
Those are specific to that building.
Just that one, okay.
Right.
I understand what you mean.
So they may have a different requirement.
All right, before we get too deep, unless it affects what these folks are gonna say, can we make sure we get through this report?
So, so yeah, if we, if we wanna just look at the cost then for a moment, priority two was four point two million, priority three was six million. And priority three is where we find most HVAC projects. Now, I will note that currently, there, there were things in the first report that we found that are under, underway, that Fernando has been making progress in. So even in the big number, things have come down. Because we, we've been able to triangulate and, and eliminate some things that are under or in progress. And priority four, further down the line, are some general maintenance. We talked about painting, beautification, landscape, things that continue to help make the schools look prideful to the community. And to a certain degree, some of those things are already in budgets of things that, that your maintenance department is already doing. So, so in terms of, you know, how do you budget for things? Some of these things may be on a, a maintenance schedule going forward.
Is the HVAC for Plymouth and Clifton in this report?
They're referenced, but we didn't include the cost because you already...
Because you know what we're doing, that means we're costing it.
Right.
There's a little asterisk when we did that, kind of at the bottom.
I see that.
Can I go back to the structure of how the dollar amounts were calculated?
Sure.
I think this may be very important.
Yes.
Is it based upon current costs in the industry? Or current, current known costs in the industry? Or average of costs that were in the industry? Here's, specifically, here's the question. When you calculated it, a new HVAC system costs X amount of dollars.
Yes.
I, I need to know how that arrived, just on a number that is sort of on a page.
Right.
What was the criteria for getting that dollar amount? So much per square foot, what is it?
So specifically HVAC or roofing also?
Probably go with roofing first.
So roofing, there were two ways. One, we had a roofing company come to do inspections of your roofing. And they, they gave us numbers based on what they would charge in this district here today.
Is this with Davis Bacon too?
I believe so, they, they are aware...
You've done business with schools before.
Yeah, yeah, so it has to be, yeah.
It's called prevailing wage.
Right.
It costs you about a third more.
Right.
What cost is?
Davis Bacon costs you a third more.
And they are a...
Davis Bacon is a federal law that says, yeah, that is the law.
Federal government, state government have, and governments have to pay
Prevailing wages.
prevailing wage rate, which there's a wage schedule, so a carpenter makes so much money. If they were hired out on a job at your house, they'd make about seventy percent of what they make here.
Right.
In the district.
So is it Davis Bacon?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely prevailing wage. They know what it means to be working in schools, they almost do all public work.
Okay.
The company we work with. Okay, so second, we have a cost estimator who is able to judge based, because we don't wanna take the word of one company who says, yeah, we'll do this and hopefully they'll...
You give us a call.
Yeah, hopefully they'll see that we, our name is in here somewhere and they'll call us. So we had our cost estimator who is gathering data from across an area and can put in factors. So for example, working in Bakersfield is a different labor rate than here. They'll, we, we have some escalation, do you know how much escalation we put in?
I think two years.
Two years, so everything is, everything in here is escalated assuming that it, it is paid in two years from now. So it's not today's dollars, it's escalated two years from now. Assuming that, you know, we're not gonna start...
Yeah, but as soon as we get a contract.
Right. And so, so they, the cost estimator we work with is very good. They know how to read the market in different environments.
So the estimate that the estimator came up with, how close was it to the actual that came in from the people?
They were very close. And so in some cases, we modified, but for the most part, they were really quite aligned. And, and the same with air conditioning. We didn't have a private company give us any prices on, on this one, on air conditioning. But air conditioning projects are happening all over every day and he was able to...
We saved a ton of money from a phone call because we called Geico and spent fifteen minutes and we saved a lot of money on air conditioning.
We, we, we did not do that, but now that you're suggesting.
That's exactly what happened, that literally is what happened.
Did it?
We didn't call Geico, we called Brian.
Oh, okay.
It's a different story, but that's exactly what happened.
Sure.
We had before us, and we went, wait, 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 we need to go back and look at this one more time. We saved a significant amount of money. That's why I asked, how were these numbers derived at?
Yeah, the, these are, we, we are not assuming any special favors, any special relationships. This is a school district in this area, two years from now, what they should expect to pay. If you can find ways to do better, that's great.
Thank you, I, I, I just wanted to know that how it was done.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and other questions or things you want to dig into?
Because you have it listed under funding opportunities, perhaps you know,
Yeah.
if we were to, except for the bonds, if we were to reach out for all of these grants, if we were to reach out for five, six, seven, eight, ten grants all at the same time, does that trigger anything? Does the state or the SA or anyone say, whoa, why is your hand out so much?
No, so I've connected Connie to a consultant that we work with in Sacramento that their, their, when we started this with Larry, his, his note to us was, we have no eligibility at the state, we're, we've used it all.
Can you, can you explain what that means?
Sure, okay, so the state has a facilities program. The state has a modernization funding program and a new construction funding program. They also have certain specialized programs. So for example, there is a special pot of money for a career technical education. So if you're, if you wanted to build auto shops, there may be special pots of money and there are other certain special kinds of money. So when, when we started, the, the rumor was that Monrovia had used all of its eligibility. The eligibility for funding. And modernization funding assumes anything older than twenty years can, you cannot get state money for, for modernization.
You're talking about State of California or CD?
State of California, State of California. State of California has the Office of Public School Construction, which orchestrates the state funding program. So anything that has not been modernized or built since twenty years is eligible for state funding. You're eligible to get in line into the state funding program. So the, what, what Larry had told me was based on applications that Monrovia filed around two thousand. So I inquired, what is the situation in Monrovia? Is there, are they coming back up for eligibility? And the answer is yes, you may have some eligibility in the not-too-distant future to get in line at the state. Now, you may remember, I'm forgetting what year it was, but it was just a few years ago where the state passed the state bond, I think it was nine billion dollars. Almost all of that, if not all of that, is, is spent. But the state is now gearing up for another state bond, which means that hopefully the state program will have money again. Which means that in the not-too-distant future, there is a possibility that Monrovia could get back in line for funding. And so, so the, the state funding program, and with each bond, the bond language defines what they're gonna put money in. So in the last bond, I think there was six billion for public schools, K-12. I think there was two billion for community colleges. There were five hundred million for charter schools and then five hundred in some of these special programs. And it's a get-in-line program. There is something that encourages districts to bring matching funds. You get some additional priorities or in past bonds there have been. But every bond, the language is a little different, but it's something that you guys can look at in the, in the future.
Does that last bond have matching fund language?
I believe it did, I believe it did.
So most likely.
Most likely, I mean, the, the state likes to be able to reward those who come with something as well.
They want to leverage their money.
Yeah. But, you know, getting in line, we're working with the district and we were able to get a grant for a robotics lab. You know, it, some, some of them have very specific uses. And there are a, a number of consultants who help you identify those sources and prepare applications. But I, I don't think there's, I'm not aware of anything that I can say would be a disadvantage or a problem in exploring or even putting in applications. You're not obligated to, to do anything. And I don't, I can't think of any reason why it would otherwise limit other sources.
I think still the abbreviations in the back.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Yes, I'm just saying that very much, thank you.
Yes, we, we, we use these terms all the time and it's, it's sometimes easy to forget that we don't all speak the same languages.
And if you, the new members aren't aware of the role DSA plays, Department of State Art, Division of State Art, whatever you wanna call it. They serve pretty much as the building department does in the city. Being a separate jurisdiction, we're, we're not required to get building permits when we do building work. But we are required if it's at certain levels to get DSA approval. That's when the trouble starts.
The very best of us.
Yeah, you know, in, in the priority four, where we put cosmetic issues, we're trying to find things that don't trigger DSA review. The list of what DSA does not want to look at is very narrow. You know, it's mostly finishes, paint, wall coverings, blinds. What's that?
Carpet.
So carpets is the one I was gonna, it used to be carpets, but now, I know you guys are gonna, are gonna laugh on this, but carpets require a transition between one floor to another and they are, they are now looking at carpets. We can't typically...
The trip hazard?
Yeah, we can't typically do, now, it's not to say that maintenance departments around California are not just doing it. But my answer to you is that DSA wants to see recarpeting projects.
So priority four does not include carpeting?
Correct. Correct.
Flooring?
They wanna see flooring, almost all flooring.
Because of the...
Slip hazard, I mean, there's different, it's, it's all part of it. I'm just the messenger. Yeah, so HVAC replacement in kind does not have to go to DSA. Lighting does. So the landscaping, when we're, we're not interfering with the path of travel, that does not, roofing, so those, those are the things that we, that we put in. You know, maintenance departments are taking on projects that are, that they define as maintenance. But once you, once you start creating bidable documents, you get into a very gray area if you start including, including things that fall into that category.
Which is one place you might get DSA excited, if you're applying for a grant saying this project needs grant money and it's eligible, and then you don't get the grant money and say, oh, it's a maintenance project.
Right, right.
DSA might get a little excited.
Yeah. Interested and concerned.
I come down and talk to you.
Having a permanent inspector on your side.
Not in a good way.
Yeah.
That was my outside voice. I, I wanna thank you for this report because this was really helpful. Your other report was good, but it was too...
Too big, yeah.
Too big, too broad, too much. And this really helps me to narrow the scope of things and costs and have a better idea. So I appreciate
Sure.
you piling this new report.
Okay, yeah. Well, I appreciate your team helping us figure out what really was most helpful to, to you as the board.
I wanted to ask another question if I could about a sub roofing that has active leaks. In your investigation into the leaks, do you also then go further into researching whether or not there's mold present? And involve the cost of the mold removal?
Good question. We did not do destructive testing. So we, we did what we can observe and we did not observe mold. There was one case, do you remember which building? There, there is one case and I'll, I'll pass it on to Fernando. There was one case where we observed discoloration that caused us to be concerned and we'll...
About mold?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll pass that on. But we did, we could not go and open walls everywhere... But we did, we could not go and open walls everywhere where there could have been leaks. And this, this is a, a good point in that our number is for the roofing. And when dealing with water intrusion, you can open something up and find dry rot or other conditions that would need to be dealt with. So-
But if you observe something that looked like a reasonable assumption that there was any further problems-
Right.
You somehow noted it, right?
Yeah.
It wasn't like, oop, not my roof, so I'm not gonna include it, right?
No, and, and like I said, I'm, we, we did not find that, we categorized differently other symptoms of degradation or conditions that were concerning. But we did not find things that we would attribute to the roof that were, I, I would put that in the category of life safety that-
Sure, absolutely.
That, you know, the, the, the structure is sagging because it's, something's going on. So we didn't, we did not find that. Which I think roofs that are leaking have not been leaking for that long, or the roofs that have failed have not been in that condition for too long. So, you know, I think it's good that this was done now because I think you're getting the information at a time that you can deal with it before it becomes a bigger issue.
The number of patches we've had to do has been increasing, which is kind of sad.
Right, right.
But this was a good winter to measure because we had an unusual amount of rain compared to probably like the last ten years.
Exactly.
So that was, it was actually a good time, I mean, to test everything.
So if, if for budgeting purposes, for cash flow purposes, we made the determination that we couldn't spend all of our money, all four million dollars on new roofs, and we decided to go patching all of them to a minimum standard, do you have a different dollar amount, say, if you patched what we saw plus some normal, we're gonna have an issue because it's pouring away and so forth, what that dollar amount would be?
We don't, and I-
Off the top of your head, I'm not gonna hold you to this.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifty percent, seventy percent of this number, thirty percent of this number?
Patching could be, patching could be thirty percent of the number, I would say.
Give, give her a take.
Yeah.
And the only reason I'm asking is, once again, it brought it up earlier, saying, you know, we're not just putting all of our dollars in roofs, even though it's in item four, you know, that it's just as important to have a building look good and attract people than it is to,
Right. So let, let me just explain why we don't have that. And we, we worked with a, a company, Garland Roofing, who likely does not want to say, and I'm not, I'm not questioning your motivation, but they do not wanna say publicly, that roof's gonna be fine if I do patching, because it might not. It, it, that their assessment, when they put the roofing in the category that pushed into priority two, they were telling us, we need to replace this roof. Now, if, if, if you say, we don't have four million, we have one point five million, and that's what we wanna spend, will there be a company that signs up and says, I will warranty the roof for another ten years? Maybe. But I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know, but-
They might eat a next season.
But the, the, you know, the, and what was the, what was the Garland warranty? Do you remember? Twenty years? It was twenty or thirty years, so-
So it's a normal roof.
Right, so, but, but they're, when, when they're giving us, when they're giving us recommendations, they're expecting to put something down that they can stand behind for that.
Yeah, they're putting their name on it.
Right, so they are not wanting to, to suggest that middle-
I understand, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to get everybody thinking what other, all the different options are and to attach actual dollar amounts, so we know what we're talking about. So we don't get, spend too much time on weeds. These are hard choices, so.
Yeah, and the question, I think the question for you is, if you spent one point five but couldn't get, say, ten years of warranty, would, would that be a good investment? And that's, that's a challenge.
Of the, all the priority two roof replacements, could you prioritize those? And-
I think the roofs that we listed that are in category two, they, they, they were the ones where the roofing companies said those roofs failed already. So-
But they're, they're all equal in their failures, in their stage of failure?
Yeah, I mean, they're equal. There's, there's a long report, which is about a thousand pages from the roofing company, where they took pictures of each damage, so there might be a chance of identifying something where the patching outweighs the complete repair, but we didn't go that much into detail because just a simple roofing report is already a thousand pages. But there's a lot of picture documentation that-
But it gives, it gives Fernando a place to go work and take a look and say, what can we do?
So we will pass on that whole, we, we're, we're talking about this, but we have a lot of-
The thousand pi, the thousand-page report, that is our offer.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so that's, that's coming to you.
I, I expect a report on Monday.
But I think that, you know, that would be helpful for us to really determine if we're going to go
Right.
patch on one of the buildings and full roof on another.
Right. Yeah, and you may upon going through say, you know, Clifton, let's, let's do the whole roof, but these other buildings, maybe those are not portable buildings, but they're older buildings that were, we don't have as much importance going, I mean, that's, I'm speaking hypothetically, but-
That whole decision-making process has to depend on age of the building, the importance of the building,
Right.
use of the building.
Right.
We can also look at the, we also look at the history of like, of the work orders, you know, repeating work orders for that same building.
I bet you can sit down and think of some roofs that you think ought to be high on the priorities.
What I really want to know on, when we do get that, is when the roofs were done last. I wanna see what the age was. A number of roofs were done on the nineteen ninety-seven bond. And in fact, if I think about the, the bond in ninety-seven, it was, it was, almost every elementary school had roofs put on. So I'd like to know what that is, because you're talking now about a twenty-two-year-old roof.
So it's coming to the end of the lifespan?
It seems like yesterday, I mean, you're not through, you're not even through paying the bond.
Right.
And you're now, you're replacing what you had a bond for.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think it was a thirty-year bond, so that, that still has some legs still left on.
Almost a percentage of replacement for, for each school.
Some of them was complete, entire. Yeah.
I have a quick side question. In the previous presentation, I think there was a separate page as a data center for, for cooling. I'm trying to see where that is in the summary, because I'm looking at the district office. I didn't know it was as part of the priority four.
I don't think we put that in the, the highest priorities, correct?
No.
So the, the things that we put in these priorities were the things that were failing, not, I think that, those are things that you want to do and, and that's valid. But we were, in terms of priorities, identifying those things that were failing and causing damage.
And I would think there would be some things in priority four that we want to do before we do all the priority twos.
Sure, perhaps.
But at least we know there-
Right.
We can make that decision then.
Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, our priorities may not be the, the order in which you do them. You know, it, if you're gonna do roofing, there may be some priority three roofs that you say, you know, we're hiring a contractor, we're gonna get an economy of scale by having them do more at the same time. So there are definitely gonna be ways in which you may shuffle things around.
I want to ask a question about a specific building.
Sure.
And maybe you remember it, maybe you don't.
Which campus are you on?
At Monroe Elementary.
Okay.
In building, I think it's D, the street or, yeah, I think it's D. There's a basement in there.
Okay.
It's a giant basement, but kids don't go in there. But teachers and staff do.
Okay.
Did you, and I don't know if there are other buildings like that anywhere else on the campus, but buildings like that where there aren't, aren't students, but there are staff? Did you address that?
Do you know how, how that-
If we had access to those basements, then we went in there.
You might not have got a split of that basement.
Yeah, and it might, it might not have been open. I don't recall that building to have, but I know that-
This is, this is all in, this is Altimista, this is Colorado.
Yeah, I need to make sure I'm right. This set of priorities that put on all the monthly are, are basically the roofs, HVACs,
Yeah.
the more maintenance-type work.
Right.
In the report that we went through before, there's another twenty-five million dollars worth of work at, at Monroe that's not in, even in student industry work.
Right.
And if that room or that basement was in the numbers or anywhere, I would think they would be in-
They would only be in there. However, we were also aligning, you know, a question came up when we were meeting with the superintendent and Ms. Wu, that why did we name the buildings the way we did, A, B, because it's different than the way you understand them, in some cases? And this, the, the nomenclature we've used is based on what the state has, DSA has, in terms of how your buildings are recognized, and CDE has in terms of what teaching stations you have. So a basement which has no teaching stations likely does not figure into the estimate as something that would have had costs applied to it because it doesn't count in the way the state looks at it. So there may be storage rooms in weird basements that-
Well, and I'm also think, I'm not sure, someone correct me, but isn't the cafeteria at Clifton
It's in the basement.
a, a substructure? So that would be another thing like what I'm thinking, and children are in there, so.
But that one we counted, because that, yes, Clifton is counted, because that is, that is defined. So DSA and CDE, California Department of Education, have these diagrams called 1A diagrams, which is your assessment, at some point when the building was built, you have to put in these diagrams that show, here's room one, that's a teaching station. Here's room two, that's a teaching station. This is a library, and you define your spaces. And that's, we were aligning with those documents, and a multi-purpose room cafeteria was, is defined. That is a space for which, when you build a new school, you can get money to apply to those types of spaces. So it counts.
Just as a point of clarification, I'm sorry, I wanna make sure that I, I understand this. You know, the, that original document with all of-
Sure.
potential, Monroe Elementary, since we were on there, has a total cost of twenty-five and a half million dollars.
Okay.
This two point three million that's listed here-
Yeah.
is not on top of the twenty-five.
Correct.
It's called from-
So, so what we've, what we've done and given you today was skimming off-
Got it.
the, the top, or a select group of work items that in, we, we felt you wanted to access separately. So all the things we're talking about, these priority items, are still within what you have previously seen.
Were, were these numbers updated when you got more firm estimates from the roofer, et cetera? When you were doing this part?
There have been updates, in a number of ways.
The numbers in this report are updated to reflect this data.
Well, in, in a number of ways. There were a number of things that informed us going forward.
Everybody good? Any, any more questions? Well, we sure appreciate you guys coming in.
Of course, of course.
Thank you very much.
This is the time of data we need to make, we need to make decisions.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for having us, and I do really wanna thank your, your staff. It's been great to work with them and they've been very able to, to really help us along.
And we wanna thank the staff that worked for you. We've been, we've been working to get here for about four years.
And Charles, buy a refrigerator and open the door.
So we'll just look for that last, last report, so, on roofing.
The thousand-page report or the-
No, wow. Where, where you're going to extract the information, the summary of the roofs.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, thanks guys.
We will adjourn the Board of Education study session. At six thirty-five.